Pass out some things, how we can pray for public servants and safety and peace for the, for the officers and that. So they're cooking brats and burgers. Can I, can I bring some back here? Go around the table and get some orders here? Uh, no. I wish I could. Um, but, uh, you know, it's, uh, something that I've just been thinking about is, is how, um, how change is so constant for us and whether it's in Washington or the state or the county, having a new sheriff and new supervisors and new construction all around us. And to, to think that as a, as a Christian, I believe in an unchanging God, and I just can't figure out how something or someone can be totally unchanging all the time when all we ever live with is change, constant change. And, um, one of the passages that comes to mind is that in all the constant flux and change, um, with God, there's a steadfastness. In Isaiah 26:3, it says that, that God will keep in perfect peace he whose mind is steadfast on the Lord. So somehow, deep inside, we find a steadfastness of our soul, of our heart, towards the steadfastness of God. And so with that, I'd like to pray. Our great Lord God, as we go through these summer months and enjoy your creation and, and the beauty and even the warmth of this weather and time on the river and the lakes and gardens, Lord, we're thankful for the creation that you've made and the, and, and everything that's beautiful. And we just pray, Lord, that in this meeting tonight, that, um, in the constant change that we see in public service, whether it's changing the roads or changing personnel or, um, making decisions about land and property and taxes and all those kind of things, we, we recognize the constant change that happens among us. And the people here in this room tonight are asking some things to change and people are asking some things to not change. And Lord, I pray that there would be wisdom, there would be the integrity and the thought to be steadfast and at peace among, among us. And we thank you that, um, no real true steadfastness, no real true peace happens without you. And so we thank you for all of that. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Tim. Will you all please do I mean a pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Cindy Roehl. Okay, we have. There. Thank you. Now, at this time, we'll be open for public comment on or off the agenda. And, uh, the public comment is limited to three minutes and we will be timing that. So, uh, we'll start out, I have a list of people here in no order, just the way I've received them. So that's the way they're gonna have to move forward with it. And, uh, the first one is Larry Rocha.
Ready? Good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to thank all the members for allowing me to speak today. I would just like to point out that we have two sister bills in our legislature, AB 399 and SB 309. And what these bills are going to do is to provide for an exemption to put commercial property in the middle of a residential zone without going through any rezonement, without any public hearings, without any input from the citizens of our community. And the reason they're gonna do this is because the state legislature has decided that they want to take local control away from local government. There's no other way to put it. That's exactly what it is. This is regarding now section one of the bill. And again, I want to be really clear, this is to remove local control, not to give us more. Further, this bill is written a bit vaguely. We know it's an exemption. They mention buildings, but they don't tell us about how much is involved of the 284 acres that those buildings sit on. That's a bit of a problem because future development could allow for large concerts or any number of other events that will vastly overtax that area due to limited roads, limited ingress and egress, and hard to get emergency vehicles down in there. It's really not a good place to be. And in all of this, we should always remember that the National Park Service has scenic easements on this property that prohibit commercial These bills are just to the benefit of one family only, although it's a change in the state law and will affect us for a very long time in the future. This puts us on a very slippery slope and other businesses could now also come in, demand these kinds of exemptions, and we could have businesses going in places where we definitely don't want them to go. And let's see. Geez, I get a little bit ahead of myself. So beyond that, I guess at this point, I'm just going to, uh, say that once again, I, as a representative of the town of Somerset, uh, we're not against business, but we are definitely against this kind of selective zoning by our state legislature. It really does us no good. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next person is Thomas Spanhol.
Honorable Chairperson and members of the county board, I'm Tom Spanhol, Town Board Chairman, Town of St. Joseph. Within your packet is Resolution 2017-11, the opposition to Senate Bill 309 and Assembly Bill 399 at the Town of St. Joseph Town Board called a special meeting on a Saturday to pass. Um, since it's, this, our, a copy of our resolution is in your packet, I'm not gonna read it. I want to talk about some other things. The Town of St. Joseph has recently completed a two and a half year comprehensive plan, um, which was completed in December of 2016. Within that plan is several other plans that were attached to it, natural resource inventory, outdoor recreation plan, two lake management plans, and a parks, trails, and recreation plan as well. Each one of those had public hearings, multiple public hearings. Each one of those had multiple open houses. We involved as many people as we possibly could to look at the types of planning, comprehensive planning, that we wanted to have in our town for the next 20 years. This bill flies right in the face of that. All of that, this activity that we just did, now granted, this isn't for a particular parcel within the Town of St. Joseph, but just real quickly, we went through this same sort of routine for three properties within the town, examined each one of those three, and decided that there may be some merit to look further and create particular potential ag zones for doing this type of establishment. We put that in our comprehensive plan, so we had the flexibility to take it further. And so that's what local government control does. We have the governance to look at our individual territories and say, what is best for us? And so this bill, I'm afraid, quite frankly, I'm afraid of bill creep. If you look at the first part of this Senate bill or the, or the Assembly bill, the last sentence of the first section, if this ever goes to court and they delete that one, that one sentence, that it's particular to this property in, in the St. Croix Riverway, and the rest of it remains, we're in huge trouble, both as a county and town. So with that, I just hope you pass the resolution in opposition to this, because I do, honestly, I don't think this is very good. Okay, it just takes away our local control. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next one is Stephen Shella.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Stephen Shella and my family, Dairy Farms in Pleasant Valley Township, south of Hammond. I just wanted to come tonight and invite everybody to the annual Farm City Day that's coming up this month. That date is Saturday, August 19th, from 10 to 2. It's gonna be at Trimble Varied, Trimble Valley Dairy. That's the Hardester family. And they're located, uh, near Spring Valley. If you're not familiar with Farm City Day, it's basically a on-the-farm open house. Uh, there'll be tours, uh, petting barnyard, exhibits, displays. Uh, kids can climb on the machinery. There's games for the kids. I build a big corn pit for the kids to play in. Um, free lunch, um, no admission or anything. And, um, you know, the event was started, uh, because a bunch of the local farm families realized that, um, the county isn't as rural as it once was. Uh, not as many people grew up on the farm, know a lot about farming, so they need an opportunity to see it, to do it. Um, and so they held the first Farm City Day 36 years ago. So how much more relevant is, is that, uh, today? So we hope you can make it, August 19th. Um, I've got some one-page flyers underneath the big TV and some big, uh, like posters. So if you know of a good place around town to put one up or want to take a couple with you, please do so. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next person, Douglas Plurde.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Uh, my name is Douglas Plurde. I'm from the Town of Somerset. I've been a lifelong resident. Uh, and I've also been on the Somerset Town Board for 12 years. I own property at 2300 Timber Road, which is, um, adjacent to the bluffs on the St. Croix, which is, um, the Hanson Zone. I own roughly 85 acres, which is about a half mile stretch on the bluff line, um, bordering the St. Croix Park Service land. Before I purchased that property, I lived in the Town of Somerset, right next to the concert site. And for 28 years, we listened to motocross races, truck pulls, multiple concerts, had huge crowds, lots of people and lots of traffic. When the opportunity came to move, we moved as far away from the village as we could while staying in the township. Our new land was that little bit of heaven that everybody looks for. No concerts, no large crowds, no traffic, and not a lot of people. When the Hanson's purchased the property or the Baptist camp next to us, we got to know them and they seemed like pretty nice people. That changed when they decided to pursue a business in that area. Knowing that, um, there was no commercial zoning in that area, we felt that it probably was never gonna happen. And that's kind of was happy because we didn't want to see the crowds, didn't want to see the, the traffic and the large noise that would come with it. They never did apply for rezoning at the town level, so I got to know them through being on the town board. Um, and that really didn't stop them. They remodeled the old lodge without building permits, clear cut, a section of the bluff line, which is visible from my yard, um, that clearly accesses or clearly even visible from the river, knowing that it was all in scenic easement. When they were eventually confronted by the county, they pled ignorance and that the rules were vague and confusing. This coming from a building contractor that knows you need building permits and follow proper zoning. Um, we all know how their case went with the county. They lost and they were denied an appeal. This was all just to start a wedding venue business, to bring a business into the, uh, residential area, which would bring the noise, traffic, and crowds into an area that's not fit for it. I guess what I fail to understand is why our legislatures would support an individual and a group who blatantly disregard town, county, DNR, and scenic wild river laws and wrote a specific bill for them. Um, I guess I failed to understand that. So I guess I'm looking, where's the support from our legislatures for the law-abiding citizens that, you know, follow the laws, get the permits, and move into areas where they know there's not gonna be commercial? So I strongly urge the county board to vote yes in the resolution to oppose Senate Bill 309 and Assembly Bill 399. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, Jan, I know she told me, Kousha.
Chairman and members of the board, my name is Jan Kousha. I am Vice Chair for the Town of Troy. I am here to, um, urge you, well, to speak in, uh, support of the resolution, your business item number five, your resolution in opposition to Senate Bill 309 and Assembly Bill 399 regarding the St. Croix Riverway zoning, uh, regulations. I urge you to, uh, pass that resolution. Um, in the Town of Troy, we obviously, our western border is on the river. Uh, we have our own Riverway ordinances to protect that, but we're currently in a moratorium and we defer to the county. And I think the county has been doing a good job enforcing those rules. Uh, and, uh, we're very concerned if this bill would, uh, go through, that it would have other effects for other properties. Uh, you know, as people with deep pockets, get legislators to write bills for them and pull us out one at a time. So, um, please, uh, act and support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Schotler.
Yes, I'm Paul Schotler and I live on, uh, Rice Lake Road, Somerset Township, and I'd like to speak to the chairman and the board. Uh, when thinking about this meeting, I was wishing that more of the citizens of Somerset Township could be here to voice their concerns. And then I realized they're one step ahead of us. They already have spoken their concerns. Several years ago, some far sighted people decided the township needed some direction. And so they authorized a survey, very comprehensive survey. It was filled out by a large number of people, I don't know the exact number, of what they wanted to see in Somerset Township in the future. Results came back and they were very mixed on many issues. But the one thing that was very clear was they wanted to preserve the rural nature of Somerset Township. That must have meant farms, corn, soybeans, livestock farms, certainly some development, homes, but not something that wasn't there, which would be commercial development. Apparently, they wanted to work in the city, but they wanted to live in an area that was rural. Now, if we take a drive up to Highway 8, there are sections that have commercial development, and then there are sections that are still very rural. I'm sure that they had in mind the sections that are very rural, and the other sections give an example of what could happen. If you want to know whether or not I back up my words, my wife and our family have put an easement on our own property. We gave up $750,000 worth of potential development. We put a conservation easement on our property. And again, that's on Rice Lake Road in Somerset Township. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next person up will be Jim Ward. Tim?
Thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Kim Ward. And the reason I felt it was really, um, important for me to be here today is because I live directly next door to the Hanson's. Um, my husband, David, and I bought our property in 2002 along the, uh, St. Croix River. Uh, we live at 301 221st Avenue. Uh, we moved there from the cities after our kids grew up. We wanted to have a place because that was beautiful and quiet and a protected scene, uh, on the protected scenic Riverway. We originally had a cabin on the Eau Claire River and we lived in Eagan. And once the kids graduated from high school, we were able to consolidate that and make that our dream home. Um, we were, so we reside right on the river. We've got a boat at our house. And just to make sure you understand, I mean, we, we're on the adjoining parcel next to, um, the Hanson's, which is 300, 221st Avenue. We are the only two homes on our dirt road. It's a dead end. Um, our parcel's butt up against the river and our road is not equipped for high volume traffic. I have family, friends, and pets at my home regularly. The extra traffic would impact their safety. We enjoy sitting on our screen porch at night. You have no idea. We hear fish jump. We hear deer, otter, beaver. We can hear every animal in its environment doing its thing in the evening. It's amazing. My husband and I have always said it's a privilege to live in their backyard. Um, I'm familiar with what some of the changes would be like if that, you know, if, if a venue, um, if it was to become resident, or, excuse me, if it was going to become business. Um, I've had some of the unfortunate, um, situation of living next to, um, some of the disruption, um, over the years. Uh, when it comes to setting up a venue, it takes several days to set it up. There's semi trucks hauling in amphitheater speakers and, and ice trucks and porta potties and every other thing that is involved with an event. And then you've got all that traffic all over again once you, um, have the tear down. So it's really a disruption. Again, two people on our little dirt road. Um, when it's the night of the event, there are drunk drivers driving past my house as well as through town. And without certainty, I feel that alcohol-related incidents would be on the rise. Um, I, I feel that's a hu- huge problem. Um, if the, a plan, if their plan was to accommodate a few hundred people on their premises, then there would be issues with garbage. And as it is, I cannot put out bird food because I have bears living in my area. We have bears sighted on both of our properties all the time. And I even have pictures, if you would like to see. Um, the outdoor bands, you know, they, they bring in these large amphitheater speakers and they play until past midnight. And every single time, I've had to call the police to ask that after 12, can I please go to sleep? I've had, I have to have my door shut, my window shut, my air conditioning on, and sit in my basement. I can't hear myself think. That is not why I moved there.
Thank you. You've, uh, had your three minutes really, so we're gonna have to
Thank you.
move on. Thank you. Bill Hertz?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Bill Hunt. Margaret and I have lived in Somerset Township for going on 36 years.
Okay.
And I have more than 20 years in public or in local government experience. Seventeen as Assistant to the City Manager of Fridley, Minnesota, and above five on the board, the Top Planning Commission of the Somerset Town. And in that time, I've been able to see, you know, what is really central to local government. And one of the things is certainly the ability to zone and plan. Um, I know when we came to Somerset, there were a lot of isolated, um, businesses in the midst, you know, and we were really worried about things like, um, you know, little shopping centers right in the middle of someplace or another. So as others have spoken, the, the plan for Somerset really tried to make for orderly development and, uh, you know, the sustainability of a reasonable kind of life in the, in the township. So I speak in favor of the resolution that you'll be up favoring tonight. I think it's in, in important that we maintain the ability of cities and local government to plan. And the only way they can do it is with some kind of zoning authority. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on. Cheryl Schotler.
Cheryl Schotler, Rice Lake Road. I live about one mile from, um, the property that's being talked about. And with what everybody else has said, I really don't need to say much. Um, I agree with all of that. I did write letters. I did get one response from Adam Jarkow, a sponsor of one of the bills. And his response sounds very good. Um, he's in favor of economic development. Well, that doesn't mean I'm not. It means I'm not in favor of it in a rural residential area. I'm in favor of economic development and good jobs, which are all real good sound bites. And I'm in favor of that where it belongs. But it does not belong in a neighborhood where the roads are narrow, they are winding, they are hilly, there are no shoulders. And I have seen quite a few semis go by the house, and I'm just very grateful. And I know they're going down there for a setup of a venue, an event. And I'm just grateful that my children, my grandchildren, are not on the road at that time. We do not want, we cannot live with commercial development in a residential area. We bought in a residential knowing that's the way it was going to be. We need to stay with our comprehensive plan, which says we do not do spot zoning. We haven't, and we don't want to start now. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Susan Bull.
My name is Susan Bull. I live at 2307 40th Street in Somerset, about a mile, mile and a half away from the proposed property. I've lived in the area over 20 years and I really only can just reiterate all of the things that have been said before. But I'd like to emphasize once again, the roadway ways that we're talking about specifically. I've been on the roads when the semi trucks have gone by, have been running down in that particular area. The roads are narrow, they're winding, the trucks are driving very fast. There are lots of families who live in the area who are walking their dogs and participating in their rural environment at that time when these kinds of things are happening. And it's a dangerous situation. And, um, you know, a commercial venue is driven by making money. So they're going to be very concerned about getting to their place at the right time. Their mind is going to be at this thing that they're going to be doing, and they're not paying attention in the same way that someone living in the area is likely to be paying attention. So I think that that's an important piece to consider. I'm all for commercial development, but there are plenty of people who live in the area who have developed their property in a way that is consistent area who have developed their property in a way that is consistent with the rules and regulations of our area and consistent with a rural sort of setting. So there's no reason why these individuals can't develop their property in a way that is to their economic advantage. I'm fine with that. But it does need to fit the situation that they find themselves in. They purchased this property knowing that all of these things were in place. They purchased it because it's beautiful, because it will be a huge attraction to people coming from the cities who will love to come out from their commercially developed areas to this beautiful rural environment without necessarily an understanding of the people who live in the area and how their activities are going to impact those people. So I encourage you to support the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Schotner?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, thanks for the opportunity. I'm the Town Chairman from the Town of Somerset. I'm here to testify in support of the resolution and opposing Assembly Bill 309 and 399. To reiterate some of the issues, this property was a former Bible camp that was, and that has federal scenic easements on it. The new owners were taken to court by St. Croix County on zoning violations, and the court agreed with St. Croix County. This property never was zoned commercial. A Bible camp and a wedding venue or an event center are not the same thing. So this cannot be considered a grandfathering in. Wedding venues have loud music and it echoes up and down the river valley, and some of them even have fireworks. The Town of Somerset is under county zoning, and in order to map, zone, or have a subdivision review, every town in the state of Wisconsin must have a comprehensive land use plan. The Town of Somerset updated ours two years ago. The two bills are in direct conflict with our comp plan because they are not consistent with each other. Just because a lodge can't be seen from the river doesn't mean that is not in the scenic easement. Just because it looks nice doesn't make it right. Zoning was originally created so that we wouldn't have these type of conflicts. We know where we want to put our commercial property and where we want our residential. States shouldn't be making laws that benefit an individual. It should be for the benefit of the general public. The Town of Somerset is not opposed to commercial businesses, but we have a plan where they should be. Every town in the state of Wisconsin should be concerned that their comprehensive plan is in jeopardy. The state just can come along and basically throw your plan down the tube. It's like, we want this business here. And if you think it can happen in your town, you better be on guard. The bottom line is the state doesn't need to tell the towns what their town should look like. We have spent a lot of time and money and effort to develop our plan. If the town constituents didn't like what our town board has done, we wouldn't be in office. I've personally been in office for 35 years. One supervisor is, he said 12, but I think he's actually been on 15. The other supervisor is 10. So if you put that collectively together, we've got a lot of experience. I think, I like to think we know what we're doing. There's a process that should be followed, and I think the state's trying to take this away from us. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tim Wisman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Town Supervisor, or County Supervisors, for allowing me at this time to speak. I just want to state one thing before I read a letter that I sent to Sheila Harzdorff and Senator Sheila Harzdorff and Representative Jarkow, was the fact that I heard this message before that Jarkow, Representative Jarkow responded, but it sounds like Sheila hasn't responded to any of the requests identifying their concerns and issues with regards to Senate Bill 309. This was a letter that I sent to both Sheila Harzdorff and Adam Jarkow. As a resident of Somerset Township in St. Croix County and as an avid outdoorsman who appreciates the quality of life in western Wisconsin area, I want to share my opinions on the Senate Bill 309 and Assembly Bill 399 you have introduced in our sponsoring. First of all, this bill and its application to the St. Croix Event Center rewards individuals who have purchased property at a value of and with the understanding of its restrictions and who have violated local zoning controls and federal regulations. Secondly, it has a potential in the future to adversely affect other scenic areas set aside for recreation in the area. These are two recreational camps I'm aware of that are located in scenic St. Croix river bluffs that could be impacted by this legislation, namely Fred C. Anderson Scout Camp and the Y MCA Camp of St. Croix and Hudson. This legislation is presented as a way to create balance of our state's beautiful natural resources and further economic development. And that was a response into a statement made by Representative Adam Jarkow as to why he was supporting this. Local communities are fully aware of that need, and both local and governments in St. Croix County have worked to create that balance and make these decisions locally. I am astounded that this legislation was presented without any discussion with local governments and residents of St. Croix County represent. Instead, this bill was introduced at the request of a business entity that was not satisfied with the outcome of local controls or judicial agreements. I thought I understood that there was an inherent value in allowing local control of these types of zoning decisions. I urge you not to support this legislation, and I go on, but I would ask that this county board support the resolution that you have on your agenda opposing Senate Bills 309 and Assembly Bill 399. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're still open for public comment on or off the agenda if anybody else wants to speak. We're still open for public comment. State your name.
I apologize for not signing in. My name is Deb Ryan. I'm the Executive Director for the St. Croix River Association. I think enough has been said, but we too oppose Senate File 309, AB 399, as well on multiple reasons. Most of them have already been stated. I think the thing that you need to consider is this is probably a law that contradicts other pieces of the law. It says very clearly in the enabling legislation that Wisconsin signed that it shall have no commercial development in those scenic areas. And I don't know how you can create a law that contradicts enabling law. So other than supporting everything else that everyone has said here, knowing that there are scenic easements on the property, and even if this law passes, they very likely are not going to be able to continue to do their plan as laid out, it seems like a moot point to support this law in, on so many regards. And I think it opens up the state of Wisconsin and others to litigation for not following the rest of the laws that they have voted to support. So thank you for your time, and I appreciate your work on this really important issue.
Thank you. I'll say it one more time. We have, we're still open for a public comment. If anybody else wants to say anything, otherwise we're gonna close the public comment at this time. Thank you. We have the consent agenda in front of us now, and number three on there has been pulled from the agenda. Is there any questions? That has been pulled, so we're voting on item one and two. I need a motion to approve. Supervisor Coulter, second. Supervisor Brinkman. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Not, we're ready to vote on that then. Thank you. That's all yeses. Presentations.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. We have two special recognitions this evening. Tomorrow's the very, first one, tomorrow's a pretty special day with the opening of the St. Croix River Crossing. And there's lots and lots of leaders, both in the state of Wisconsin and the state of Minnesota, that made this bridge a reality. We have a special guest with us this evening from St. Croix County who played a pretty vital role almost from day one in shepherding this project through. And I'd like to introduce Bill Rubin, who will make an introduction of this evening's guest.
Good afternoon or good evening, everyone. I was taken by Tim Sackett's comments earlier this afternoon about change. And I think an exciting chapter in St. Croix County's history will play out starting tomorrow with the ceremonial ribbon cutting and soon thereafter the opening of the bridge. And as County Administrator Thompson said, there were many players that made tomorrow's day possible, and one of those is what I consider to be a very good friend of mine, John Soderberg. And with that, Pat, I think I'll turn it back over to you for the presentation. I'd call Mr. Soderberg up.
Come on up, John.
Thank you.
John, we'd like to, St. Croix County Board of Supervisors would like to present this proclamation to you, and I will read it. Whereas the St. Croix River is designated as a federally protected wild and scenic river, and whereas a replacement bridge over the St. Croix River has been debated for decades, and whereas John D. Soderberg, a resident of the greater New Richmond area, took a leadership role in advocating the need for a new bridge, and whereas John D. Soderberg first served as the Chair of a two-state advocacy group called the St. Croix Alliance for an Interstate Bridge, and whereas John D. Soderberg was an important participant in the 2003-2006 stakeholder process that recommended a new bridge in a corridor approximately one mile south of downtown Stillwater, Minnesota. And whereas, when progress toward a new bridge waned, John D. Soderberg again took a leadership position as Chair of the Coalition for the St. Croix River Crossing, and whereas John D. Soderberg attended several meetings in Washington, DC with congressional leaders and congressional subcommittees, and whereas an exception to the Wild and Scenic Rivers Act was approved in the US Senate and US House of Representatives and signed into law by President Barack Obama in March 2012, and whereas construction on the St. Croix Crossing commenced in early 2013 and after four years is now completed, and whereas a ceremonial ribbon cutting will occur on Wednesday, August 2, 2017, allowing the St. Croix Crossing to open on August 3, 2017, and whereas John D. Soderberg never lost his enthusiasm in championing a new bridge across the St. Croix River. Now therefore, in recognition of his numerous contributions in making the St. Croix Crossing a reality, the St. Croix County Board of Supervisors proclaims Wednesday, August 2, 2017, as John D. Soderberg Day in St. Croix County, Wisconsin. Signed by the Chairman of the Board, Roger Larson, myself, Administrator, and attested by Cindy Campbell, County Clerk. Congratulations, John.
It was a long 21 years. But it met a lot of nice people, both here in Washington and Minnesota, Wisconsin. And of course, we were always at it in Minnesota, Wisconsin. But this really brought this thing together with the two states. And it was so satisfying for me to see what really has to be done. You can take a look at the bridge of 10 years ago in Minneapolis. We need to take care of this, and we need to take care of it, and we have a very beautiful bridge. And I've driven by there for, I think every time the last two months, and I see pictures, people taking pictures of it. It really is a nice, very nice bridge. You're gonna like it. And I thank you, and I thank, I really love living in St. Croix County. When I, I have a place up north and I drive up there a couple times a week, and I, when I get back into St. Croix County, the roads are better. Everything is better. And it's good to get home. Thank you very much.
We have another recognition now?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would like to recognize one of our own employees, a 911 dispatcher, who recently was very involved in a medical call that came into our center. I'm gonna call on Steve Takash and this employee's supervisor, Terry Anderson, to approach the podium, say a few words, and then introduce our dispatcher, who should be recognized for her stellar work in saving some lives, basically. But I'm gonna let these guys explain what happened, and I think they have something to show you. Come on up, Steve.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, good evening. We often take 911 calls that involve life, mostly unfortunately injury to life, sometimes death to people. But this was one of those really happy occasions, and I'm gonna turn the podium over to Terry Anderson, who's the Emergency Communications Manager, to talk about it. But I will promote, as I always do when I'm up here in these occasions, that your money, when you talk about return on investment, this is another return on your investment in the dispatch center, in the staff, and in our emergency medical dispatch protocols, which were part of the Phase Two. So please keep that in mind when constituents ask you, what do I get for my money? You get the following story.
Good afternoon. With us today, we have Shelley Lansing. She's one of your emergency telecommunications in our center. She's been with us 10-plus years. On June 21, she was working, and she was the one that processed a 911 call from a caller named Janelle. She was on her way to the Baldwin Hospital at the time. She was pregnant, but her newborn child had another idea of when they were going to arrive in this world. They did not make it to the hospital. Janelle called 911 and spoke to Shelley. Shelley, along with her coworkers, worked as a team. And Shelley was processing the call, using EMD, going through the questions, getting references, what questions to ask. Her partners were notifying emergency services from Baldwin and notifying the Sheriff's Office to respond. Now, I'm gonna tell you, within nine minutes of the call, the child was born. Them nine minutes for Shelley was an eternity, I can tell you that. It was eight minutes prior to the arrival of EMS. Now during that time, Shelley was dealing with the mother who put the phone on speaker. She was on her cell phone, of course. But she also had her nine-year-old son in the vehicle. So Shelley had two individuals that she had to coach through this event. And I can tell you, the son of the mother was very excited. But as we processed the call, Shelley gave her instructions on what to do, what to expect, and this was her second child, I believe, if memory serves right. But as they processed the call, she was given instructions to Janelle. As time progressed, prior to the arrival of EMS, the child came. So Shelley provided instructions on what to do, and let's just say the gift had arrived prior to EMS arriving. So at that time, they took over from there. Now with this, the news media took recognition of the great job that Shelley did during this occasion. We had multiple news stations wanting to interview Shelley, multiple newspapers. ABC New York called and did an interview. ABC New York called and did an interview with Shelley over the phone as well. So there's multiple news agencies that wanted to speak to her about this significant call that she handled. So what I have to show here is one of the local stations when they did their interview.
A Western Wisconsin mother says she is exhausted and excited after a terrifying 24 hours.
Janelle Peterson went into labor yesterday while she was driving herself and her eight-year-old son to the hospital. Her baby just couldn't wait. She called 911, and a dispatcher named Shelley answered.
Now, you're in labor? Okay, why don't you pull over and let me send the ambulance, okay?
Okay, sorry.
No, that's okay. You just pull over. Does it feel like the baby's crowning?
Well, I'm pretty sure of it.
And what I want you to do is apply firm but gentle pressure to keep the baby's head from delivering too fast.
Well, this is baby TJ. One day later, Susan Elizabeth Littlefield met the new mom and the dispatcher, who no doubt now have a connection.
On most days, the St. Croix 911 Center isn't exactly brimming with joy.
Every day, there's calls that they handle that maybe drag them down. Incidents like yesterday are uplifting for morale.
And what's more uplifting than sweet little TJ? He was delivered with the help of a woman who's never even seen him until now.
Oh, my gosh, look at him.
TJ's mom and eight-year-old brother were en route to the hospital. Janelle's contractions were five to seven minutes apart, so she thought she had time.
The contraction that came through felt like it was a, let's time to start pushing one. So, call 911, and Shelley is her first name that was on the other line.
When you're dealing with a call like that and you're not on scene, you have to imagine in your head what's going on based on what they tell you.
I had another contraction shortly thereafter, which delivered his head out. Shelley told me to do, which holding my hand there to guide his head through so that he didn't come too fast.
Janelle credits Shelley and the EMS crew and deputy who helped finish the safe delivery of TJ and get them both here to this Baldwin Hospital.
Thank you so much for keeping me calm, walking me through it all, and keeping my son calm and talking to him.
You know, we deal with a lot of bad things, so yesterday was good for everybody. It was a happy day.
Yes, it was. Susan Elizabeth Littlefield, WCCO 4 News.
Shelley says she doesn't want the praise. She says she was just doing her job, and she credits the EMS crew, the deputy, and her coworkers for making sure little TJ safely entered the world.
Well, job well done to both of them.
No kidding.
Seriously.
Yeah. My goodness. If I was in that car, I'd need a second 911 operator.
So with that said, today, we'd like to recognize Shelley Lansing, one of our 911 telecommunications here at St. Croix County.
Thanks, Terry. Thanks, Steve, and thanks, Shelley. Like the, like the TV announcer said, you're not looking for praise, but we, as a board and the administration and all of our employees, are thankful that, that you were on call that day. So thank you so much for what you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you.
We have some appointments we have to vote on tonight. We have two district supervisors that have to be replaced, left District 7 and District 13. We're going to, I don't know, you want to explain that now on the vote, or you want to go through the, I can have the candidates step up and...
Why don't you have them step up?
Yep. First one to step up is Tammy Muthaden. She'll step up and address the board from District 7.
Yes, this is for District 7. Hi, my name is Tammy Muthaden. I have lived in District 7 in the city of Hudson for 12 years with my husband and two children. I have a, one son in middle school and one son at the Hudson High School. I work in health care. I am an occupational therapist with Alina Home Care. I provide home care services primarily to the elderly and disabled. For many years, I worked in the Twin Cities metro area, and for the last about two years, I've been able to serve St. Croix, Pierce, and Polk County, providing home care services. So this is kind of what got me interested when I heard that there was an open position on the board. As part of my home care services, I'm frequently in contact with county agencies as I'm looking for resources for the patients I'm, I'm serving. And so I really understand there are important decisions, life-changing decisions that are made at the county level. Experience-wise, I have served on several committees at Alina through my job. I have supervised university-level students and trained in new employees. Outside of work, I have served on the Board of Directors at the Minnesota Boy Choir, a nonprofit organization my son is involved in. And I was a chair of a choir support committee that worked on the fundraising and the social events. So I guess, you know, from an interest level, I just would love to be a part of giving back to the community and participating in the decisions as St. Croix County continues to grow and have changing demographics, and make sure that, you know, I represent District 7 and all of St. Croix County as we make decisions about the resources of land and tax dollars and keeping people healthy and, and safe and cared for. So, thank you for considering me, and I hope to, hope to be seeing you again.
Anybody have any questions for Tammy? See, none. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
And then we have our next candidate, which is Brian Wells.
Hello, everybody. I am honored to be before you, and thank you for the opportunity to be among the selected residents who will possibly fill this board seat. As was said, my name is Brian Wells. I'm a husband, father, and resident of Hudson, Wisconsin, and active member of my community. For the past 20 years, I've led and actively participated in global dynamic, cross-functional teams in both medical device, chemical development, manufacturing, software development, and security. I feel my background, both professionally and personally, and my passion for my community would facilitate a seamless transition that would have immediate impact for my community. I hope for the chance to work with each of you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions for Brian? I see none. I will, does everybody understand how we're going to vote tonight? If we don't, I can have Corp. Consul explain so we don't have any mistakes tonight. Should I do that?
So for each district, the board chair has forwarded more than one candidate, and so there'll be an actual ballot for each district. The winner would be, well, the, the election is decided by a majority of the quorum present. So my understanding is that there's been one candidate in the other district that's dropped out. Is that correct? Or this district?
This one.
This district. So we should have a majority of the quorum on the first round. Thanks.
Can I add something? Sure. Can I add something? Okay. Yes, I do have the ballots. And just remember, you're required to sign it, and you're required to include your district number on it. And you have to vote for one candidate.
One candidate. Any questions?
Okay. All right. Do you want to announce? Do you want me to announce?
Yes.
You want me to? Okay. All right, all the ballots are valid, so we had 11 votes for Tammy and five votes for Brian.
Okay. So now, if I remember right, say that person move up to the table and can vote on the next district?
Yes.
So Tammy can move forward to the District 7 seat, and can also vote on this election of the next supervisor for District 13.
I'll show her how I do the button.
Yes.
So we have District 13. Now, we have, so the first candidate to come up is Ryan Shirley, should speak to the board.
Good evening, board members. Chairman, Ryan Shirley. I live in New Richmond in District 13. Prior to that, I had lived in Hudson for most of my life, so I've been in St. Croix County. I currently own a commercial construction company in Hudson and have owned that for, going on two years now. We've lived in New Richmond for, going on four years. Outside of work, I had coached the New Richmond swim team for about five years and enjoy being out in the community, doing things with our children in the area. And an important thing, I think, to know is that prior to this vacancy, I had intended to run for the spring election as, as well. I think Cindy can attest to the fact that I think I was the first one to come in to get paperwork.
You filed your campaign registration statement.
Right. And I had filed before the vacancy paperwork was filed too. So, thank you.
Any questions for Ryan, then? If none, our next candidate is Scotty Ard from District 13.
Mr. Chairman, supervisors, residents of District 13. Tonight, you are voting on the voice, the next voice of District 13. I have lived in New Richmond my entire life. I think most of you are well aware of my history with the county and my work on county projects. Currently, I am an alderman in the city of New Richmond for District 2. I am also a lobbyist with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. You have heard public speak earlier in this meeting regarding AB 399 and Senate Bill 309. The tide is turning in Madison, and it is against local control. It will be up to the due diligence of this board to protect St. Croix County, to protect the towns, villages, and municipalities within the county while serving the people of this county. Another bill that you should be aware of that was just launched is AB 456. AB 456 is a multiplex bill, but one thing that you will be interested in is that the wheel tax, which St. Croix County now has, if the bill passes, will be required to be part of a referendum in a normal election cycle. Even if it's a new wheel tax or an establishment such as St. Croix, it will have to go to referendum. There are a number of bills that we need to be aware of, and we need people to speak strongly to protect St. Croix County. I speak strongly for the District of New Richmond, and I speak strongly for District 13. And I hope that you will support my voice to be the voice of District 13. Thank you.
Any questions for Scotty? See, none. We'll have Cindy pass out the ballots.
Ready?
Go ahead.
Okay, all the ballots are valid, signed, and district numbers included. 12 votes for Scotty Ard, five votes for Ryan Shirley.
Okay, so then we'll have Scotty Ard move up to District 13 Chair. And then we have... We have one more appointment to make.
Yeah, we have one more appointment, administrative appointment of Tom Coulter to the Council on Aging and Disabilities.
I need a motion to approve. Supervisor.
I would move the administrative appointment of Tom Coulter to the Council on Aging and Disabilities.
Supervisor Anderson. Seconded. So now it's going to get it up there, motion second, we'll have discussion. Any discussion? There's no discussion. It's time to vote on the appointment of Tom Coulter. And that's all. Yeses. Wait a minute, we've got two that haven't voted yet. District Seven and Thirteen.
Oh geez.
They're not up there yet?
Sorry, my fault. I didn't put them in yet.
Okay.
Give me a minute. We can, if that's...
Sure.
Okay, no?
Yeah, otherwise I'll have to plug them in the system. Can they just voice vote? Okay, thank you.
Okay. That's all yeses on that, and at this time, I'm going to ask the board if it's all right if we take a ten-minute recess so that IT can get the tablets ready for the new board members, the new supervisors who came on tonight. So if we take a ten-minute recess, that'll give them time to do that, get up to speed on that, so, thank you. Well, we'll move on, we'll start with Highway Department report. Is Robbie here? Monap, start your report.
Good evening. I was told by a couple of supervisors that if I kept it under an hour and a half, that'd be fine, so I'll do my best. But first off, I do want to thank everybody in this room and more importantly, the entire Highway Department. Without the quality of personnel that we have at St. Croix County, my transition here would have been much harder, but I do want to express thanks to them. The report itself is fairly simple and straightforward. I'm not going to go through and read it point by point. I do want to touch on a couple of goals and objectives that we did achieve. We continue to strive to meet certain goals with our asphaltic surface as far as covering as many miles as we can with the amount of money, being as cost-effective and providing that service level. So for the 2016, you can see the amount of mileage that we covered. We are applying some new techniques, we are trying some milling profiles, trying to extend that dollar and stretch that fiscal expenditure to cover as much mileage as we can. Same with the maintenance. If you look on there, the chip seal mileage does is a little below goal. That goal is based on a twenty-four foot width. Most of the roads that were listed on here were in excess of thirty feet. So it's a little misleading and we could list it by the twenty-four equivalent mile, twenty-four foot equivalent mile, but I thought it'd be just the best to be the amount of mileage that we covered. Knowledge sharing, I'm going to briefly touch on a few points there. We are making outreach efforts as well as trying to help our partners, the towns and the municipalities where we can on issues that are important to them. Issues and concerns, ongoing winter maintenance challenges that we have are upcoming. We've had a significant amount of ice storms in the past couple of years that have put real stress on both our equipment and manpower. They eat both a lot of materials and time. So the variance in those, as well as some of the issues coming forward, we're touched on tonight. Funding is always going to be an issue within transportation, and both at the state and federal level, there's a lot of things moving right now with the transportation budget that is going to be important to us moving forward. So I do ask that everyone keep themselves aware of those issues that are upcoming as we talk both the vehicle registration fee, which was discussed tonight, as well as a few other things. Goals and objective for 2017. We will continue to try to optimize and leverage as much outside funding as we can get within the St. Croix County. That includes all the state and federal programs we can find. We continue to aggressively pursue any opportunities for federal funding within our state mileage, or, excuse me, within our county mileage. Another initiative is a countywide safety plan. In the past, a lot of times, highway departments were definitely proactive, or reactive to accidents instead of proactives. We are trying to take a more proactive approach in which we are monitoring our roadways and looking for safety concerns where accidents haven't occurred, where we can address those prior to the accident rather than after. So that's going to be an aggressive plan that we take from 2017 forward. The facility planning initiative, as part of the committee of the whole meeting, we saw the presentation there. That's going to be a big issue for the Highway Department moving forward. Public education and outreach, that's something I feel very strongly about. I would like to continue outreach to the public. We recently did a touch a truck in the village of Roberts for the Roberts Library, in which we had 250 children. I looked at a number of the trucks throughout the area. And then maintenance programs evaluation. We're going to continue to evaluate ways we can provide the cost-effective, efficient services. A couple of key points on that is the 3564 interchange, which we talked about, the bridge being open tomorrow. We're going to continue to try, we did a system evaluation with Wisconsin Department of Transportation. We're going to try to maintain staffing levels for the winter maintenance and summer maintenance activities through that corridor. This first year will be a good test run for us to see if additional personnel may be needed in that area. I want to just keep that on the front burner because it may become an issue as we move through the first winter with that system becoming fully open. We are looking at other maintenance programs to try to stretch our cost effectiveness, including a thin overlay program. That's something that we've worked on in other places that I feel can be a cost-effective solution in St. Croix County. We'll look to continue to evaluate that. And the other hot-button issue that I have received a number of calls and complaints on is the invasive species. That's been a real challenge throughout the county. We are working with the towns. We did outfit a truck this year, so we are capable of spraying. We are doing a pilot program throughout the county on the county system where we're targeting certain areas where the invasives are the heaviest. What I can tell you, that it is a work in progress. We are hoping that Wisconsin Department of Transportation would come along a little quicker on that. They are doing a couple pilot programs in different counties. We've asked to be a part of that pilot program. The ironic part about the truck, we got it set up in June and I thought we'd have the capacity to maybe look for the Department of Transportation to go outside the county. The utilization, as the towns found out that we were set up to do that, they've came forward in great numbers looking for that truck's capability as well. So we will continue to be aggressive in that program and try to find a solution for the invasive species. So that's going to be one of the real challenges moving forward.
Can you just explain to them real quick the invasive species, what you're actually doing? And one of the things that people notice right away is they're doing guardrails first for safety thing. So if you see them spraying guardrails, not just because they're doing it, it's because of the safety aspect, but the types of things that they're attacking.
In particular, especially this initial round, the wild parsnip has been the invasive of concern as of right now. What we have been working with and partnered with a company out of Menominee that developed a spray that we are applying. It has to be applied under certain conditions, under certain wind conditions, so we don't have the spread outside of the public right away. So we are trying to minimize that. We also have a mowing campaign. Both the Wisconsin Department of DNRs came out with guidance on mowing. We're trying to aggressively advance that mowing as well as the spraying. We spray, we target certain areas first as was mentioned prior. So the guardrail, safety issues, we try to target those areas first. The parsnip's been a real challenge just because how aggressively it can spread, so we'll continue to track that.
Any other questions for Rob? See, none. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Next one's our county surveyor, Brian Holling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I will keep it brief, as Rob did such a good job and Mr. Amber helped out by not passing on his joke book, so... But anyway, in all seriousness, I just personally like to say how lucky I think we are to have Rob on board on the team of St. Croix County, so... Anyway, all of you should, my name's Brian Holling, by the way, county surveyor. A lot of familiar faces, a couple not here, so I'd just like to open up my open invite policy that if any of you ever have any questions or concerns or anything survey-related or not, just give me a holler, my door's always open, or send me an email or whatnot. Really, the majority of my job actually is, is not so much like it was twenty years ago when we were out in the bush pounding pipe, and now it's more dealing with the public. And so really, a lot of my job is, you know, we're public servants. So I'm sure all of you, or many of you probably know of issues, personal, neighbors, or whatnot, where people's fences are over the line. We all know of these boundary disputes that come up. And of course, what do the people do when they have a boundary dispute or anything survey-related? They Google "survey St. Croix County" and they end up with me. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know that a lot of the time is spent with public fielding, public inquiries and whatnot. So anyway, just skipping down through my report here and just touching on a couple of the things that we worked on in 2016. ESS is keeping us busy with the new towers, so for each one of them, we have to do a site survey for it, which we're involved in. We're always involved with WISTOT. You see all the overpasses going over ninety-four. We're involved in maintaining any monuments, perpetuating any monumentation on those surveys or those construction sites. We do all the county highway right-of-way surveys and right-of-way acquisitions in-house. For Glen Hills Watershed, we maintain all the benchmarks there. And so just to throw some numbers out at you, we do all of the, we perform technical reviews on all the subdivisions that come through the county. And just so you can see some trends, in 2016, there were 114 CSMs that came through our, not 114 lots, but 114 maps that came into our office for review, technical review on that. Now that was 114 in 2016. So far this year to date, we've had seventy-four, which if you project that out, that will surpass last year's. Back in, in 2015, we only had eighty for the entire year, and in 2014, we had thirty-one. So that just gives you, gives you some perspective as far as the trends in development in the county. So with that, you can see our different objectives and goals for 2017 that we have here. And I will just close with asking for any questions. And like I said, if you guys ever have any questions, just don't be afraid to give me a holler.
Any questions for Brian? See, none. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Our next one is Beth Papps, Register of Deeds.
I told Paulette I'd be quick and short so she can get back to Hammond for the National Night Out. Most of you know me, Beth Papps, Register of Deeds. Robbie gave me a nice little tick line. He said, "My department is the gatekeeper to history." So we have all the old vital records, all of the old historical land records. That's what we do, those are the things we collect. So that's kind of a neat little, neat little thing. The goals and objectives are on there, you can all see that. A couple of the things that I want to point out, we have some designated fund money from 2014 and before that, from when we had redaction. We're slowly using that up towards staffing to pay an actual person in-house to do the back-indexing and to make sure all the social security numbers are off with the Register of Deeds records. We had Erica Mavis last year, she has since left, and now we've filled that with Megan Blights, who was a title company person, and she's doing an amazing job for us. She's very quick and does a great job with the customers. Some of the things that we did in 2016 that I would like to point out is that we actually did reimage 320,000 poor-quality images, and we have those imported into our system now. With any imaging project, as you import them, you have like about five lists to clean up, things where we're now, we see that we have some missing images yet, so we're going to try to load, or get those digitized and in. We have where the import didn't match the old images to the new images, so we're kind of cleaning that up too. Couple of little projects that has brought to our attention. One thing that we've kind of been working on, we've been working with Ellen's department and the people in the mapping division to kind of create some new maps for the county websites, such things as Sheriff's Stales, recent sales, so we can kind of see in a map version what's kind of been happening in the county. That was one of the things that we talked about last year, and we are moving towards that, but the website redesign has kind of put a little bit of that on hold while all departments are kind of handling that kind of stuff. One of the things that I want to point out is item F in my report. Basically, the Register of Deeds brings in about $2.6 million, but most of it, we don't get to keep at the county level. So I think that's something that a lot of us don't realize and we don't think about it, is basically, we collect money for the Department of Administration for both land records and for vital records, and then some money also goes for every birth record sold to the State Children's Trust Fund, and that goes for awareness for things such as child abuse and other projects and promotions down at the state level. So only about 935,000 of that 2.6 million was actually kept at the county, and of that, 791,000, a little bit over, went to the general fund for the county to pay towards my office expenses and any expenses of the county, so 37% is all we keep. Couple of the other things to point out, Brian was talking about the certified survey maps that we record, or that he reviews. Those eventually do come into our office. So the trend of new certified survey maps, one of the things that we've been noticing too on the real estate market is the inventory of homes out there is very, very low. It's very difficult for people to buy an existing home, so that's one of the things. The trends are going to be a few more certified survey maps, maybe a few new subdivisions coming our way again, that net new construction, so that's kind of the change in the market. Anytime that the inventory level is low out there for homes on the market, the recordings coming into our office are low, but then again, homes are kind of selling at a better price too, so that's kind of good for the county. Couple of other things to point out. 2017 and 2016, we're trying to record more of the real estate documents electronically. What that means for the county is just a better, efficient service to the customers out there. Anytime somebody sends me a document that, maybe they send the wrong amount of money, I have to send it back. Anytime they send a document where maybe it doesn't, they forget to include the legal description, or somebody forgets to sign it, or they forget to put a parcel number on, all of those go back. So in the electronic world, rather than mail to me, mailing back out, waiting for them to correct, coming back in, you know, it used to take about four to six days at least, at a minimum, for somebody to correct something, get it back in. We can kick it back and it's back to us within an hour. And so that is very, very good service to the customers out there. We had a promotion about a month back where we invited a bunch of people that send in documents on a regular basis, and we had one of the electronic recording vendors do a demonstration for them, showing them how that it could improve their recording ability. So that's one of the things that we're going to be pushing. We're at about 43% of our documents now being recorded electronically, so that's extremely nice. And then new for the Register of Deeds office in 2017, something I told you about a little bit last year, is statewide issuance of vital records is occurring now. So anybody that comes to the Register of Deeds office can get any birth record back from 1907 from the state of Wisconsin, rather than going to the county of occurrence or down to the state vital records office in Madison. So that's something we've been noticing, a lot of people coming, getting their birth record from Dane County or getting their birth record from Milwaukee County or any of the smaller counties up north, rather than having to drive there. So that's been really, really nice. It's hard to tell whether it's increasing the amount of vital records we're selling or if we just have a different customer base, because now people that were born in St. Croix don't necessarily have to come here either. Same thing for births and, or deaths and marriages. We can also issue those from about 2013, 2016 forward, depending on the type of record. So that's been... So, that's been kind of nice for our office too. Other than that, I don't really have too much to share.
Any questions for Beth?
And as always, my door's always open too, stop on by, we like to see people.
Okay, thank you. Now, we'll turn it over to Administrator Thompson for his financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to keep this meeting moving along, the monthly financials are in the packet, they show expenditures and revenues for each department through the end of June, so represents half a year. Bottom line, in terms of revenues, we're slightly behind, that's mostly because of grant collections, they're not quite caught up to where they should be, but they will be, and this is typical through the course of the year. So, we're at 55% remaining in revenues, and in terms of expenditures, bottom line, we have 62% of budget remaining for expenditure, so we're right in line with where we should be. Also in your packet is a status report on the capital improvement project list, which the board has approved and funded. If you have any questions as you look through any of these reports, please reach out to me on your own, or Bob Minnit, the finance director, and we can try to help you through this. For the two new board members, we'll schedule some time in the next few weeks and sit down and kind of walk you through some of these reports and try to help explain what, what we're trying to, what kind of information we're showing the board and how we do that. So, congratulations, both of you, and I'll reach out to you in the next few weeks. I don't know if there are any questions at this point. If not, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any questions on the financial report? Not seeing any, we'll move forward with the business items tonight. The first one is the ordinance creating Chapter 32, smoking on county property. I need a motion. Supervisor Anderson, second. Supervisor Schoberg, second. Any discussion?
This item was brought up at our June meeting, it was referred back to the Health and Human Services Board. They took it up at their last meeting, discussed it, and there were no changes recommended from Health and Human Services. So, it, it comes back to you now as a recommendation from the Health and Human Services Board for adoption, and as well as the Administration Committee, who formally approved the ordinance revision.
If I don't see any discussion, we'll move forward and vote on it, so. That's all yeses, thank you. The next one is a resolution amending the investment policy. I need a motion to move forward. Supervisor Schoberg, second. Supervisor Berkey, I'll have.
Yes, this, this comes to you, this policy revision comes to you from the Administration Committee. There are two revisions to the investment policy. One is that for any new bank account, that's the, is, that is, there was requested for a new bank account, the Investment Committee needs to approve and authorize any new bank accounts. And then, the second revision is that lists the county treasurer as a co-administrator on each bank account for the county. These were recommendations that came forward from the audit, and so, the Investment Committee, Administration Committee took these up and have approved the two policy revisions in there before you this evening for approval.
Are there any questions or discussion? Not seeing any, we have a motion, the second will vote on it. The next resolution coming forward is supporting grant applications for Snowmobile Trail AIDS and rehabilitation, rehabilitation projects. I have a motion too. Supervisor Ring, I have a second. Supervisor Hanson, and we'll have an explanation on that.
This resolution comes before you from the Community Development Committee. It authorizes the application for a $20,000 grant, it's a 50-50 match. The, the, it is, the maximum amount is $20,000. It's a 50-50 match, and it's to make improvements to the Wildwood Trail.
I have a motion, the second, is there any discussion, Supervisor? PV?
Yeah, just to clarify, I will be abstaining from this resolution since the family farm we have owns 1.0, almost three miles total on each side of the trail, and any change on the trail could have a financial impact, and I believe our conflict of interest policy would prohibit me from voting, so I will be abstaining.
Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on this. That's all yeses, with the one abstained, so that passes. Our next one is a resolution approving grant applications for Snowmobile Bridge Development. I have a motion on the floor. Supervisor Ring, second. Supervisor Hanson.
This comes before you from the Community Development Committee as well. It is a application request for 100% grant, no match, up to $244,300. It's actually for two bridges, one is the Glen Hills Bridge and also the Forest Town Bridge. For a total cost not to exceed $244,300, it's a 100% grant, no match.
Okay, any questions? No questions, no discussion? We'll vote on it. That's all yeses with people here, thank you. Our next one is a resolution in opposition to the Senate Bill 309 and Assembly Bill 399 regarding the Lower St. Croix River Zone Regulations. Supervisor Berkey has a motion, drive a second. Supervisor Hanson. Talk about that a little bit, Pat, I think we had enough discussion on that tonight, I don't know if anybody needs any more discussion. If not, Supervisor Ring, and I'll come back to Supervisor Schoberg.
Yes, I would like to speak in favor, this comes from the Community Development Committee. And a little bit of background, you heard from several people who spoke tonight, three of whom represented townships. What I think we have here is a situation where a decision was made, it's pretty simple, so, a property owner, someone wanted to buy some property in the National Scenic Riverway, they bought the property. What they wanted to do with the property was make it an event center. It was against the regulations. So, they went ahead and did, made the improvements anyway, in spite of the regulations. And then, they, they were caught, and then it went to court, and the county won, and then, now they're asking for permission from the legislature to allow the use that they wanted in the first place. I just think this is not how public policy should be made. What, the towns that you heard tonight went through many, many, many months of determining what land uses they want. I mean, they're 18 months or 24-month-long processes, those processes included doing surveys of what they want. So, one of the things that happens with this, if this is approved, I think if it looks, if I understand, I mean, if, I think it's in line 55. So, if this use is allowed, and Madison feels like they know better than we know locally, this, if the use is allowed, it's a, we don't even, it's not a commercial district, so all of the normal requirements that our local units of government work very hard, and we work very hard, to enforce and to treat everybody fairly, they're not at the table. We, we don't even have, like, it's, there's no commercial use on that specific property. So, what we would typically expect of a commercial use, we don't, we don't get to control. So, that's, that's just one thing I, I wanted to point out, and I think, you know, one of the people said tonight, "I don't want to leave the perception," these were the words, something like, "that deep pockets get legislators to write bills for them." We don't do, we don't work that way here. We go through the planning process, we vest a lot of time and effort, we work very closely, the towns and the counties. This, I don't know if the state talked to anybody locally about it. This looks like it's doing a favor for a property owner. Thank you.
Supervisor Schoberg?
Yeah, just on a matter that did not come up to everybody's attention, but for some reason, we were each given a legal memorandum today that went to the Wisconsin Counties Association, which purports to speak against our resolution and in support of this proposed legislation. But, if you read what this particular law firm was asked to do, they were asked only to opine on the county's ability to grant variances. They weren't asked to comment about the loss of local control, which the county would certainly, Wisconsin Counties Association, as it has done every single year, strongly opposes the loss of local control. Local control is a core value, a core value of our local government, and you've heard it from all the towns here. So, if, it's, it's, it's not what this law firm was addressing, and they did a good job saying that, yes, Subparagraph 3 of the proposed Assembly Bill, which says now we, as a county, we have to follow the guidelines of the DNR, we don't have to seek their additional approval. That's a smokescreen. We're supposed to, oh, oh, that's, that's good, Wisconsin Counties Association must be in favor of it. This is misleading. I don't know why, I mean, the legislation is bad enough, and then they throw in something misleading on top of it. I think if any of our board members votes against our resolution, it means that you have to examine your duty of loyalty to this county, because this county stands for local control, especially of zoning, of our shorelands, and to protect the Wild and Scenic River Act. The first memorandum I ever lot to, wrote, as I was entering law school, was about the Wild and Scenic River Act. It's amazing piece of legislation, the St. Croix River is beautiful, and now some large event is to occur right on its banks? Come on. So, let's send a message back to, to these legislators. I don't have any clue why they would sponsor this. Sheila Harzendorf, why would you sponsor this thing? What's up? What's up? So, you know, as strong as I've ever been on any issue, I'm, I'm in support of our, our motion here.
Supervisor Nelson?
Yeah, it's not, it's not only Jarco and Sheila Harzendorf, Shannon Zimmerman, my opponent last fall, who says he's all about more local control, he's also part of a, one of the people supporting, and so is Rob Stashalt from New Richmond. So, obviously, we're fighting against our own elected legislators around here to make sure we do the right thing. And we don't go around as county board members threatening county board heads or directors that they're not doing their job, or they're giving us a bad name by doing their job. That makes me mad. I don't want to hear that, and I got earful from a couple of people the other day about what's been going on, about trying to strong-arm people. But just remember, follow the money, because this is what it sounds like to me, is like, if they can get to those deep pockets and try to get legislation changed, that's horrible representation. As a county board member, you have a duty to protect your citizens here, your environment here, your lands, and the rules that we work for. But if you want to throw that away because of a political ideology, you're not doing your job.
Supervisor Berkey, I'll be over here.
I want to reiterate that we know Wisconsin as a champion of natural resources and public parks. We look back to Gaylord Nelson, Earth Day, all the work that he did on the Federal Wild and Scenic River Act, that goes back to 1968. I, I say, if we lose the DNR review and the approval process, we are in a dangerous slope to lose the scenic protection of our riverway. I fear that losing this level of regulation on behalf of our Wild and Scenic Riverway will open the entire preservation area, area up to who knows how many and multiple uses that the original ordinance protected the preservation area from. Indeed, we would lose local control. I think it's very sad that our legislators in Madison are actually staging this as we will gain greater control. I had that discussion with Senator Harzendorf and a message from Mr. Zimmerman. This is absolutely losing local control. So, I ask all of you to look within your hearts in the history of our great state of Wisconsin and vote in favor of this resolution as proposed out of our Community Development Committee. Thank you.
Supervisor Hanson?
I have a technical question regarding easements which the previous property owner, property owner had sold to this state, or is the federal government, which is in perpetuity, and is this in violation in what is our role in enforcing it? I'm wondering if Alan Denzer could address that, or Ed Ron, who's here, could, could come up, would you allow that?
I can, I can address it.
What? Oh, they had to.
I can. So, the federal easement would be enforced and, and by the federal government, the county doesn't have a standing. My understanding, and Heather Willskey did the litigation for her office, but the, and she's here, but the, the federal easement also prohibits commercial activity. So, I think it's correct to say that even if this legislation would be passed, there would still have to be some kind of relief granted from that federal easement for them to use the property as they originally proposed.
Does, does that mean that the comments that we heard from somebody earlier, that even if this legislation goes through, it's moot because they are still in violation of the federal law, because of the easement?
That's my understanding, yes.
Supervisor R.
Fellow supervisors and residents of St. Croix County, this proposal of SB 309 and AB 399 is a portion of a much larger property rights package, which has been allegedly scheduled for introduction in the fall. However, my information from Madison, which is very good, would suggest that this may be posed on a 999 motion when they go to the floor, which means that this could pass as an entire package. This board has brought forth a resolution which is making a very bold and strong statement. And I will ask every resident in St. Croix County to contact Representative Adam Jarco, Representative Rob Stashalt, Representative Shannon Zimmerman, and Senator Sheila Harzendorf, and very plainly let them know that this is not going to be tolerable in St. Croix County, that we will not tolerate a favoritism of one property over the rights of others, over the work of villages, townships, and municipalities in their progressive and proper planning. This is the only way that I can see these bills will be defeated, is if you hit them where it counts, and that means with your future vote, by letting them know this is unacceptable. The best responses that happen in Madison- The best responses that happen in Madison and the best changes are when people get on the phone, send a written letter, or an email. This representatives, assemblymen, and senators respond to, because those are the people speaking.
Anybody else? Supervisor Long?
I'm a little confused, because I've heard so many comments about losing local control, and then I read some of this information that we have, in that we're actually gaining local control because we no longer have to have the approval of the DNR. So I would like some clarification on that, because there seems to be a lot of opinion as to whether you believe we're losing or gaining local control, and I'd like to know a little more objectively where that issue actually stands.
So currently under the law, so the bill has two parts. There's the, what I would call the grandfather, a campground into an event center provision. That's one part. And then it has a provision regarding an elimination of the sentence under sub-three of the statute. That elimination of the sentence eliminates the county's need to seek consent to grant a variance and prior consent to modify an ordinance. But one thing that the legislation doesn't do, which I think makes it really not that significant, is with regard to three, is that the county still has to have its ordinances in line with the regulations and standards of NR 118. So the impact really is with variances. And I can tell you from experience in being here four years and having gone through variances, that the DNR doesn't take a position, often does not take a position on variances even within the riverway district. So I would respectfully agree with Mr. Phillips, or Attorney Phillips, when he says the legislation grants far more discretion to modify the county's riverway ordinance, because it really doesn't. The county still has to conform with the requirements. What it does is it doesn't need pre-consent from the DNR. So I would say that maybe there's fewer hoops to jump through, but it doesn't modify the regulations, except for the campground into a wedding event center.
Any other questions? Any other discussion on the resolution on Bill 309 and 399? If not, we'll vote on it this time. Two noes and abstain, and the rest are yeses, so it passes, so it moves forward. Thank you, everyone. Our next one's an ordinance amending St. Croix County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 17, Section 17.65, sign regulations. Then we get into 17.65A1, 1765A2, 1765B2, 1765B3, 1765B4, 1765B5, 1765B6, 1765C3, 1765C4, 1765C6, 1765D1, 1765D2, 1765D3, and 71665D4. And I hope I got them all right. A lot of 1765s in there, so. I need a motion. Supervisor Berkey, second.
Basically, what is proposed with the sign regulations is to bring us into compliance so they are constitutional. We had outside counsel review our signed regulations after a Supreme Court decision, Reed versus the town of Gilbert. And the basic issue is that we're, you can't regulate content, it's a violation of free speech. So the attorneys reviewed this and made these recommendations, basically to protect our interests, so that our rules are constitutional.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any questions? If not, we'll vote on that. That's all yeses, thank you. Our next one is the ordinance repealing St. Croix County Code of Ordinances, Section 17.80, 17.90, wireless communication service and other transmission facilities, and creating Section 1750, mobile tower siting. I need a motion. Supervisor Ring, second. Supervisor Nelson, discussion? Supervisor Hanson?
I'd just point out that this is another place where the legislature has whacked into our local zoning authority. Up until this legislation passed in Madison, if you were to put up a new tower in St. Croix County, it was to be a monopole, which is far more aesthetically pleasing than putting up a tower with guidelines which cover the width of the height of the tower, which you could do now. And there is very limited setbacks that we're changing this. It's a real kick in the shin to the zoning efforts of St. Croix County that we are required to pass this today.
Any other discussion? One abstain, the rest are all yeses, that passes, thank you. Request for future agenda items. Anybody have anything for future agendas? Supervisor Colter?
Yeah, John brought forward, to my attention, a design-build proposal that a number of other counties are getting behind and promoting with the Wisconsin Counties Association to allow the county to save some money on construction projects by being able to hire design-build contractors instead of having to go through a design-bid-build process. So it's used by, it's catching on so that most private construction now is design-build, and it's more economical, and it creates a clear accountability, and I think it's a resolution that we should consider supporting.
And what committee would that go through? Admin? So we'll send that on to admin then. Thank you. Any others? Supervisor Ard?
Mr. Chairman, design-build is also part of AB 456, which is being proposed by the legislature at this time.
Seeing none, we'll move forward here. County clerks report and zoning requests.
I have no correspondence. I just wanted to remind, I have, supervisors, I do have this directory of several copies. They're sent to the county for county board supervisors. If you want one, pick one up over here. If not, I'll distribute them to departments. I have a few of them sitting in here. Just a reminder, if you're interested in attending the WCA Annual Conference, I need to know. Early registration is August 4th, and for the new supervisors, I'll send you some information on that. If you're interested, please let me know so I can get into the early registration period. I do have five people interested in going so far. And then also a reminder that there is a ceremonial swearing-in of Sheriff Scott Knutson on Thursday at noon here at the Government Center in the county boardroom.
Thank you, Cindy. Any other announcements from anybody? Not seeing none. Thank you, everyone, Supervisor Berkey.
Just a quick question. Is there any busing or coordinated effort for people that want to go tomorrow to the new bridge opening from Wisconsin?
There's shuttles leaving, the Somerset schools, I believe the high school, and some of the other schools starting at 8:00 a.m. shuttles leaving those areas. You are encouraged strongly not to drive your personal vehicles over there. Parking is going to be very restricted and limited, so they're strongly encouraging people to shuttle over and, from the Wisconsin side, that is taking place from schools within the Somerset School District.
Okay. Okay. If I don't see any more announcements, then I'll, thank you, everyone. Meeting is adjourned.